will now be recorded.
Okay, in the yesterday's session, we were talking about sudden fundamental points related to SAP FICO consulting. Now what we'll do is, we'll try to understand one more point, something called as configuration process in a project. We'll try to understand something called as configuration process in a project, meaning when you are working in any project, if you have to do any configuration, how exactly you need to work on the configuration, we'll try to understand now. First point, as we're all aware, to do the configuration, you need a different screen wherein you need to go to the specific screen, do the configuration. Now here, when we talk about configuration, are we referring to settings or not? When we talk about configuration, in our example, configuration is referring to setting. Now to do or to define this setting, you need to understand what and all you need to maintain. As we discussed yesterday, we understood configuration is a direct activity or configuration is based on the business requirement.
Business requirement.
It's on the business.
Right? Configuration is based on the business requirement, assuming we got the business requirement. After getting the business requirement, how will you do the configuration? First point, when you talk about configuration, you need to know in which project are you defining or are you doing this config? Basically, we will be working in or we will be defining the configuration in two types of a project. One is, let's say, implementation and rollout project. Second one is a support project. Clear these two points? The way you do a configuration in the implementation project plus in the rollout project is exactly the same. Plus, the way you do the configuration in any support project is not the same, it is different. Now, here, config is based on BBP or SDD. What do you mean by BBP? Any idea, anyone? Here, BPP is part to business blueprint. Or we were talking about SDD, SDD is referring to what? This is something called as solution design document. Clear these two terminologies?
Yes, sir.
Business blueprint and solution design document. Slowly, we need to make sure we are getting familiar to these terminologies. Right from the beginning, we need to make sure we are becoming familiar to this. Similarly, when you're working or when you're talking about a support project, even in the support project, we will be defining or we will be working on configuration. But in the support project, our configuration is based on, let's say, config is based on CR. Now here, when you're talking about CR, what are we referring to by CR?
Change request.
We are referring to change. Is this clear? Yes, no? Meaning now it is not just configuration, right? It is config only, but the way you do the config, is there any difference or not? How you do it based on what? Correct. If you're in a support project, you need a CR, you need a first. Without a change request, configuration is not possible. In the support project, similarly, without a business blueprint, without a solution design document, configuration is not possible in any implementation project or in any rollout project. For now, are these two points along with these two color coding are understood? Blueprint, solution design document, change request.
Yes. Process procedure, BPP, that is different from business blue.
Similar.
Similar, no? I mean designing the process about all the components.
Usually those we will be using in the support project because in the support, you will be working on bits and pieces, right? Not everything.
BRD is different, sir. Business request.
BRD is different. BRD will be used in case of a CR. To work on a change request, you need BRD document. First, we will only try to get the basic, basic fundamentals so that those who are understanding it for the first time will also feel comfortable. Understood, right? So that as we move forward, once we start our regular configuration, we will connect every point the way it is used in any project. Am I clear?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Now after this, what we will do, there is something called, now, before we do configuration, we must understand SAP system landscape. What we need to understand?
SAP system land.
Before we start working on any configuration, first we need to understand SAP system landscape. Now here, when we talk about SAP system landscape, majoritely there are three system landscape. First one is your yeah. We have three system landscape. First one is development system or development client. Second one is your quality system. Now the terminologies may be interchanged depending on the company, depending on the project, but as a consultant, you must be familiar with alternative or different similar terminology as well. Quality system or quality client. Third one is production system or production client. Are these three names clear? Development, quality, production?
Yes, sir.
Right? We are clear with development, quality, production. Now what we need to understand here, first we need to understand why do we have three system? When we say that why we have three system, now SAP configuration or first of all, SAP system is not ready to use application. This everybody has a clarity now, right? SAP is not ready to use application. Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Not something that I can buy, I can use directly, not possible. You need to set up the system according to your business process, according to your business requirement. Now for this to happen, you need to ensure you have a SAP partner called as SAP implementation partner or SAP support partner, who will be understanding, getting at a requirement. Accordingly, they will be setting up the system for your business requirement or for your business need. Now for this to happen, there is a something called a trial and error. When we say there is something called a trial and error, SAP has got so many features, SAP has got so many functionalities. Now in any company, if somebody is implementing or using SAP, they are not just using it for accounting. They are not just using for costing, they will be using it for all the other business functions like purchasing, sale, production, HR, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
It will use to for different functions of the business, meaning you need to make sure your system is working fine even after implementing or even after setting up all other module, meaning right from the beginning, you need to make sure your total business process is working fine in the system. To make sure total business process is working fine in the system, you need to ensure there is a proper or there is a thorough testing happening from the business side and from the consulting point of view. To do this, you need a testing system. When we said to do it, you need a testing system, before you hand over anything to the client, before you show anything to the client, before you ensure, yes, it is possible, it is not possible, this can be done, this cannot be done, you need to ensure it is feasible or not feasible. For that, we all need a development system. As the name itself is telling, this is where you're developing the system, right? To meet the business requirement, to work according to the client's business requirement. Now in the development system, we do have two subsystems. How many you'll have here?
Two.
Two subsystems.
For whom? For a FICO consultant because it is strictly required for us to initially understand what is required for a FICO point of view. Later on, we will see what is required for this, but initially, we are all becoming a FICO, we need to strictly put our effort understanding with respect to FICO. For a FICO consultant in development, you will be having two system. Similarly, these two systems, whatever I am writing here, let me color it and then I'll come down. If I come down to this, okay, development client hundred, similarly, development client two hundred. You will differentiate two systems within development based on what? Client number?
Yes.
Something like hundred to hundred, this number will be generated given by the basis consultant. All this we will write down as we progress. Now in the development hundred, what will happen? Here, we will strictly maintain configuration alone, meaning in development hundred, other than configuration, do we do anything or nothing?
Nothing. We do not post anything or do anything. It's just.
Other than configuration, nothing is done in development hundred. In development two hundred, here, we will do the unit testing. What you'll do here? Here you will be doing unit testing. Now, do you have a clarity on development system?
Yes, sir.
There are two clients in development, client hundred, client two hundred. In client one hundred, you will work only on configuration alone strictly, nothing other than configuration in development hundred. Similarly, in development two hundred, you will be doing unit testing. Other than unit testing, nothing will be done in development two hundred. Once these two are clear to us, then we will talk about quality. Quality at this moment, not relevant to us. First, let us try to have a clarity on development. Understood, right?
Yes, Ajay.
Once you have clarity on development, then only we will go to quality. Once we have a clarity on quality, then I'll talk about production. If I talk everything at a time, we end up getting a confusion without understanding anything. Let us not get into this confusion mode. Now let's say what I'll do for us to do the configuration, we require business requirement. Is this right?
Yes, sir.
After you do the configuration, we require business requirement because this is what we discussed even yesterday. In the SAP data flow, right? First point is business requirement. Only after the business requirement, we listed or we wrote configuration, right? So you need business requirement. Business requirement. We also need sign off slash approval on the process. Clear? First thing, you need business requirement. The second thing, this business requirement must be signed off or this business requirement must be approved. If a business requirement is given, but it is not yet confirmed, you cannot start working, right?
Yes.
You can start working only after you getting the business requirement and then this business requirement is approved. Plus, this is this business requirement is assigned of without sign off, without approval, you are not supposed to do do any configuration in any project, no matter what. Secondly, for us to do the unit testing, we require business test cases or test scripts or test scenarios. Clear?
Yes.
Right? In short, can you directly do it here or before you do it here, there is a process, there is a procedure?
I think.
Can we, can I directly go to SAP, do the configuration based on the config step that I got it from any source? You said, how you do it project? No, right?
We need to submit.
You to do a config, right? For you to do the config, you need the business requirement, you need the approval on the requirement. For you to do the testing, you need to test the cases, test script, test scenarios.
Yes, sir.
After looking at it, is this a direct or it is not a direct activity?
Not a direct activity.
This is not a direct task, right? Meaning there are prerequisite before you do something?
Yes.
If you to make sure all this information is gathered, all this information is collected, only after this you can start working on the business process or only after this you can start defining or developing the system. Now here, when you're doing the configuration, there are two ways. Configuration, we will divide into two stages. Okay, configuration, we will divide into two stages. Now these two stages of configuration is basically, first one is baseline configuration, second one is business process configuration. Understood?
Yes, sir.
At moment, all we need is getting familiar to the terminology, that is it. You don't need to understand what is baseline, what is business process. We will elaborate every point as we move forward, but at this moment, all I want you to do is get familiar to the terminology. Am I clear?
Yes, sir.
Slowly, we will make sure we are familiar to the terminology. Other than this, nothing else is required.
Yeah, Ajay, I have a question. Hello?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Ajay, so the business requirement and business or test cases, we will get through, we will get get from client only, right? Like test cases, they will be providing it or from our side, we will order it, how it will be?
Business requirement is given by the client. Test the cases is collect, some will be given by the client, some you will be preparing. Because client does not know how exactly SAP works, right? There may be different features which are provided in SAP that client is not aware, right? So such things we will do it. So when we start working on the system, we will bring everything into the picture. Okay?
Okay, sir.
Whatever we're writing now, when we look into the SAP, when we start configuring SAP, each and every point, we will practically connect with every configuration that we do. Only for that purpose, we are now getting familiar to what is what. Otherwise, we will look at only the configuration, right? I don't want you to look at only the config. I want you to look at the config by connecting each and every point that happens in a project. Now here, we will segregate configuration into two parts. One is baseline configuration. Second one is business process configuration. When you talk about baseline configuration, you are basically referring to organization structure. What are you referring to? Organization structure. Now, when you talk about organization structure, SAP works in a different way. When we say SAP works in a different way, for you to use SAP, there should be some org structure. According to that only, you need to define. Whatever is a requirement, you have to follow the proper org structure that is defined in SAP or that is decided by SAP. Meaning you cannot define the structure the way you want it. It is as simple as like you wanted to have a bike. When I say you want to have a bike, you want to have a car. For bike, for car, whoever is the manufacturer, they have a structure or not. Am I right?
Yes.
Right? You cannot change everything, right? There are certain things which can be changed. There are certain things which cannot be changed. Am I correct?
Right.
Because certain things are structural changes which cannot be modified. You have to stick to it. If you don't like it, you leave the product, etc. But you cannot say, no, 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 I want to change it. It is not possible because these are decided by the company. So those are all basically organization structure. First, we need to understand organization structure related to SAP. Now even before we talk about SAP org structure, first we need to ensure SAP FICO organization structure. Only after this, let us get into business process. If I put SAP FICO organization structure, here, if we talk about org structure, there is something in it which you'll have to understand. First point, you need to understand, first one, operating concern. What is the first one?
Operating concern.
Operating concern.
Right? First one is operating concern. Second one is controlling area. Third one is your company code. Remember only these three points. Okay? Remember only these three points at this moment. First is what?
Operating.
Operating concern.
Operating concern. Second is what?
Controlling area.
Controlling area. Third is what?
Company.
Company code. In accounting, we record everything by writing journal entry. Am I correct or not correct?
Journal entry.
Right? In accounting, you record everything by writing journal entry. If I don't write a journal entry, is it possible for you to do accounting?
Not possible.
I say that no, I don't write the journal entry, but I still want to do my accounting. I still want to maintain my accounting. Is this possible? Not possible without journal entry?
Yes.
Without journal entry, is this possible or it is not possible?
Not possible.
Not possible, right?
Yep.
So here, without journal entries, accounting is not possible. Is this a statement correct or not correct?
Alright.
Correct, sir.
Right? You don't have to tell yes, okay, correct for every point I write. Sometimes I purposely write wrong statement to check to what extent you are following what I'm talking. So be careful. Don't simply tell yes, correct, whatever I'm telling, whatever I'm writing. Sometimes to check whether you're really listening or paying attention or not, I will be putting wrong statements also. Understood, right? So please validate what I'm talking. Please make sure whatever we're discussing is right. You'll have to validate. Now without journal entries, accounting is not possible. In SAP, we write or we record journal entries at company code level. At what level?
Company code.
At company code level. Clear? Now in organization structure, you have three points, right? One, two, three?
Operating.
Right? You have three points. First, second, third or top to bottom, I will say this is stop. Then that's I call it as bottom. Clear?
Yes.
I'll say this is bottom, I'll say this is top. This is top and then this is bottom. Clear?
Company code is top.
No. Sequence whatever I listed, that is correct. Okay, whatever sequence we've listed, it is correct and it is supposed to be the same. There is no change in the sequence. It is exactly the same. But when you're talking about the reporting, sorry, when you're talking about the recording a transaction, is it recorded at the top level or is it recorded at the bottom level?
Right, bottom.
Accounting entry, are we recording at the top level from the org structure or are we recording at the bottom level at the org structure?
Bottom level.
Bottom level. Company code.
Company code.
Company code is top or bottom?
Bottom.
Bottom.
Company code is coming at bottom level, right?
Yes, sir.
Company code is coming at bottom level. Now, when you're looking at this org structure, when you're looking at the accounting or journal entry, org structure is strictly beginning from operating concern, controlling area, company code, there is no change, there is no deviation. In the same sequence, you have to buy hearted. Am I clear? There should be no point of any confusion for anyone here. Agree everyone? Understood?
Yes, sir.
How you buy hearted is up to you, but there should be zero possibility of getting a confusion. There is a zero possibility of confusing all this kind of thing, purely eliminated. Whether you like, you don't like, you have to stick to it. Okay? Now operating concern, controlling area, company code is our org structure. Transaction is recorded at company code level. Transaction is recorded at what level?
Company code level.
Company code level. So at this moment, you'll have to speak to only I think somebody who has background of noise, please be on mute. Don't unmute your mics. Anybody who has caught background noise or you are somewhere outside, please do not unmute. Else you will find it difficult while referring to the recording. Okay? Now top level, you have operating concern, bottom level, you have company code. All the accounting entries or all the transactions are recorded at company code level, which means at bottom level. Now you need to understand one more point here. Operating concern. Operating concern. We should have how many?
One.
Exactly, operating. You should have only one operating concern. Controlling area. How many you should have?
Uh, it can be one or more than one.
But recommended is only one. So let us stick to only one. Okay? Operating concern should be only one. Controlling area should be only one and you can have here. We can have
As many.
More than one.
Multiple.
Okay, over here, operating concern is referred to as a company?
No, no, this, all these three are completely different. Company is not part of the organization structure. Company is part of your config, but not part of the org structure.
Okay.
Okay, when we start working on the configuration, we will be looking at we'll be looking at what is what at a detailed pace. At this moment, we are just trying to get a little bit familiarity on this on the sequential order of the SAP FICO or on the key fundamentals of SAP FICO. Understood, right? So far?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Now, next what we'll have to do, you need to make sure there is a link connection between these three org structure points as below. We've got three points right in the org structure. One, two, three. Right? These three to be connected to each other within the below points. One is chart of accounts. Other one is currency and then fiscal year. What and all? We need to make sure chart of account, currency, fiscal year. These three are supposed to be properly aligned or these three are to be properly created to ensure you connect between these three org elements or you connect between these three org structures. Am I clear? Just remember these three points. We will clearly understand how these are connected in the coming sessions. Okay? Stick to this point. Understood, right?
Yes, definitely.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Now, all the configurations or we'll say we maintain configurations in SAP at three levels majoritively. At how many levels?
Three levels.
Three levels. Okay, those are client level configuration. Second one country level configuration. Third one is your company code level configuration. Are these three points clear again?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Right? Client level config, country level config, company code level config. Now, when you do any configuration from the organization structure, what are you referring to?
Operating concern, controlling area, company.
No, no, no. My question is, when you are talking about configuration, okay, out of these three, what is connected in the configuration level?
Company code.
Company code is.
Company code, right? Now, let me highlight company code. I'll just keep it green. Okay? This is what is giving a go ahead. Correct?
Yes.
Now, we maintain all the accounting entries at the company code level plus we generate most of the reports at the company code level. Again, these two points are highlighting what?
Company code.
Again, these two are highlighting company code. Here also company code. Understood? So by looking at all these points, we can come to a conclusion. Whatever we do in SAP, majoritely, everything is with respect to a company code?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Majoritely, everything is with respect to a company code. So where we need to pay more attention? From your the structure.
Company code.
Company code.
We'll have to put more attention from your org structure on the company code setting. Now, first we'll try to understand company code. Let's write company code. When you talk about the company code, we need to understand it is nothing but legal entity or
AR Sika.
Registered business.
Yes, sir.
Right? This is nothing but a legal entity or this is nothing but registered company or a registered name. Now, before you decide what is the company code or what is a legal entity, you look at anything where you are purchasing or you look at anything where you are selling. First of all, let us look at from where we are purchasing. For example, you wanted to purchase something, where will you purchase? From a company? From a shop?
Yes, sir.
Correct? You will purchase from a shop. Let us take an example. You wanted to purchase a laptop. If you wanted to purchase a laptop, from where you can purchase a laptop?
Store. Normally, store, outlet or e-commerce site.
Meaning, everything that you see that, okay, I can buy from here, has got a name or not?
Definitely.
Whatever you tell that I can buy from here, I can buy from, everything has got a name or no name.
Name, name exists.
Right? For everything, there is a name. For example, if I say, I will go purchase from Bajaj Electronics. Or I will go purchase from Flipkart. Or I'll go purchase from Amazon. Correct or not? Or I'll go purchase from something like Chroma. Go purchase directly from Dell, I'll go directly purchase from Lenovo. You have only one option or many options?
So many options.
You have so many options. Now, everybody, when you do a purchase, will they produce or will they give you a bill or not?
They will give a bill.
Yes, sir.
Everywhere you will get a bill, right? Now, when you get a bill, you look at the bill copy, you look at the invoice copy, is this kind of a pre-printed document or not? On your bill?
Yes, sir.
You have something called header, you have something called footer. Correct or not?
Correct.
If I say, this is the bill or this is the invoice or in short bill. This invoice or bill contains predefined header, footer. If it is Amazon, for example, or Bajaj Electronics, for example, it contains the heading called as Bajaj Electronics on the top.
Yes.
Right? At the bottom, you will have address or contact, all this kind of thing. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Invoice, header, footer remains same. This is something we call as, can we say letterhead? Anybody heard letterhead?
Yes, sir.
You would have seen letterheads, right?
Yes, sir.
When you say letterhead, it is a standard, though there is nothing printed, but it is an official document. Agree? Not a white paper printout?
Right.
Letterhead is not a white paper printout, right? It has got a predefined text on it. Company logo, company name, company registration number, company contact number, company email ID, X, Y, Z. Understood something? Or you're still blank?
Understood.
Understood, right? Now, when you talk about this, you look at company any name. You take Bajaj Electronics. If you look at Bajaj Electronics in India, is it there only at one location or it is there at multiple locations?
There in multiple locations.
Multiple locations.
It is there in multiple location. Maybe you take, it is there in Hyderabad, it is there in Bangalore, it is there in Mumbai, it is there in Chennai, it is there in Pune and so on. In every city, is the name same like Bajaj Electronics or from city to city, name is getting changed?
It's the same one.
Same.
Same.
It is the same. It is the same because it is one company, right?
Right.
Same company, right? All the locations, whatever, whatever you represent, is called as a branch. Hyderabad branch, Mumbai branch, Pune branch, Chennai branch, yes, no?
Yes, sir. Right, sir.
You have to look at a company name first. Okay? And then look at where and all this company is operating in India. First thing, you stick to one country. If you are from India, you take a company who is operating in India. If you are from some other country, please take a company from your country and think, is this company operating only at the one location? Or is this company operating at multiple locations in my country? If it is operating at multiple locations, question yourself, at every location, is company name getting changed? Or the name is becoming the same? What will happen?
Same or like a phone.
Name will remain the same, only the address will differ. Agree? Address, contact number will differ.
Right.
Address will be different, contact number will be different because store to store, branch to branch, they will keep the different address, but name will remain the same. If I change the name, now I am referring to a different company?
Yes.
Right? If I am changing the name, then I am referring to a different company. Instead, what you'll have to look at? Look at a company who is operating at multiple places, only in one country as of now. Later on, I'll make you understand how to think about a company who is operating at multiple countries. There are many companies who are operating in multi countries, right? That is why you call it as multinational company, MNC corporate company.
Yes.
When you say corporate job, corporate company, MNC multinational company, multinational is nothing but multinationality. Nationality is nothing but country.
Yes, sir.
If what is your nationality, you will tell I am an Indian, I am a different other country, correct or not?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
MNC or multinational company, corporate company is nothing but company operating in multiple countries, which we will see in the coming session. At this moment, let us stick to a company which is operating in one country or which is you take a company, one country, look at at how many places it is operating. At this level, what you will realize, you will be thinking, okay, though it is operating at multiple places, name is the same everywhere?
Yes.
Though it's operating in multiple locations, name is the same because you are talking about legal entity, you are talking about registered business. Or we also talk about registered company. Now here, what we need to do? Company registration is done at what level? What level?
Country level.
Country level.
Company registration is done at country level, meaning if I am looking at, let's say Bajaj Electronics, now can I open a store in my street, can I put Bajaj Electronics board it out? Can I start issuing the bills on Bajaj Electronics name? Allowed or not allowed?
Yes, sir.
Allowed?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Not allowed.
No, no.
Not allowed. Because Bajaj Electronics is already an existing company, right? They are already doing the business. Now, you cannot start another business with the same name as Bajaj Electronics. And you cannot start giving bills and all on this name, right? Then it becomes a fake company. Duplicate company. Am I right?
Yes. Yes.
If I wanted to put the same name, I need to add either a head or a tail to it. Bajaj Company Limited, Bajaj Company, X, Y, Z and all. Simple example, if you all look at, we all have something we call as restaurants, right? You will find lot of restaurants with the similar name. But for people to get attracted, what the owners will do, they'll take the same name, but small, then they'll add some small header, tail to it.
Like KFC, something like.
KFC.
Santosh Daba, new Santosh Daba.
Ah, right. You take Santosh Daba. They'll put
New Santosh Daba.
Santosh Daba, new Santosh Daba. Or ABC Santosh Daba. This ABC knew all this kind of thing, they put small letter. Santosh Daba, they highlighted, right? Because people wanted to look at Santosh Daba, they want to go there. But original Santosh Daba may be somewhere else.
Yes, sir.
Right? You take Bhavarti. Everybody will put green Bhavarti, yellow Bhavarti, French Bhavarti and all.
Even KFC also, they put YFC, RFC, something like.
Right. Meaning, what they do, they're doing the business, but they wanted to make use of the existing business.
Yes, sir, to attract the customer.
They cannot use exactly the same because if they use the same name, there will be legal action, right?
The patent.
For every company, you have the copyright, you have patent.
Copyright. Yeah.
Right? Now, all these things, if you keep aside, you need to make sure a company is created at country level. Now, whatever the name that you are registering for your company is called as company code in SAP. Am I clear?
Right, sir.
Yes, sir.
Registered name of your business is nothing but company code in SAP. Is this a statement clear or not clear?
Yes, sir.
It's clear, sir.
Registered name of your company or registered name of your business is basically a company code. So tomorrow, when you are asking how you will create a company code, how you will decide how many company codes to be created, don't tell, okay, if my company name is Bajaj Electronics, if I am operating Bajaj Electronics, let's say in forty cities and I am holding around six hundred branches, possible or not?
Possible.
Possible.
Yeah.
Why can't it be your company?
Sorry?
Uh, why, why it is a company code for an example, Bajaj Electronics? Why can't it be a company?
Because we have listed, your config is maintained at company code level. Reports are at company code level. In your org structure, you have company code only. Yes, no?
Yes, sir.
We will connect every point. As we move forward, we will keep connecting every point. That way, it We will connect every point. As we move forward, we'll keep connecting every point that we're discussing now. Understood, right?
Yeah.
Assuming, Bajaj Electronics is operating at forty cities. And Bajaj Electronics has got six hundred branches. Now, how many company codes are we supposed to make in SAP? One, forty or six hundred?
I think we will make.
It has to be one, only one, simple. You take an example. Right, example, let's say. Bajaj. Electronics. Is operating in. Forty cities. And has got. Six hundred branches. How many? Company codes we need in SAP, simple question.
Six hundred.
You have one.
Only one.
You have forty, you have six hundred.
One, one company code.
Out of these three, only one is correct.
Yes.
This is correct. This is wrong. This is wrong.
Well, but there is a question.
What if you have to, to company?
No. Now, let me tell you.
Company could be one, but company code could be like a multiple.
No, as of now, we are not referring anywhere company, we are only referring to company code, okay?
The company code could be multiple, so we have a six, six hundred branches, so every branch has a one company code, right?
No.
No?
No. That's where most of us will make a mistake. And from the beginning onward, we'll have to ensure these mistakes are permanently eliminated, otherwise, if we are getting it confused. At a later stage. Or after completing it running, it's very bad. Meaning, anybody will say that you do not even know what is. Or at what, uh, on what basis you create a company code. How can I believe that you know FICO? You getting my point?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Uh, but the question, like, we can have a company, like I have a ABC company, ABC Enterprise, this is the company. And then I can have my branches on, let's say one is in India, one is in China, one is in Mexico.
No.
So we have a.
I told, as of now, let us stick, stick to only one country, right?
Okay, okay.
At this moment, let us stick to, stick to only one country. That is where I put. Cities and then branches. I did not mention countries. Countries I'll take you in the next level. At this moment, first let us stick to single country only, okay?
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah. Now, in one country, you've got forty cities where you're operating, you've got six hundred branches where you're operating. Now, in forty cities, you are represented as Bajaj Electronics only, am I correct or not?
Yes.
In six hundred branches, you're represented as the same name.
Same name.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Now, you registered same name. If you look at how many registered names that you have for your business.
Only one.
Now, to take forty, you will arrive at only single number, repeated forty times? Correct or not?
Right.
If you look at the branch, you have six hundred branches, and if you look at the name, same name repeated six hundred times?
Correct.
Yes.
Now, how many legal names you have?
One.
One.
Single one.
No matter at how many places you're operating, look at the names, not the places. Got my point, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Look at the name. If you have a single name operated at multiple places in one country, you still have to create. Single or one company code strictly. It is not your choice, it is not my choi- my choice. The way I want, I keep creating a company code, not allowed. Strictly not allowed. Okay, it is as simple as like. I'm using a car. I'm using a car. Maybe car contains how many tires?
Four tires.
Is it okay if I wanted to have eight tires to a car? More faster, no, right?
No, no, no.
There are certain things which are fixed. You'll have to keep only four. And you can keep only one extra as a step near it, spare tire.
Yes, sir.
Right.
You'll have to keep only four. You cannot create, put whatever you want, not allowed. Similarly, the company code also like this only. You cannot create at whatever level you want, strictly not allowed. If you do it, everything is gone. Everything is gone in such a way that it cannot be repaired, you can do nothing to it. Meaning, it is the starting point. When I say it is a starting point, when you're standing up or when you're able to stand, only then you can do something, right? You can walk. Dance or you can run, whatever you want to do it. It is possible only when you are able to stand up. Once you're able to stand up, then you can do whatever you want. Similarly, if you are able to understand at what level or how you create a company code, what is your company code? How you will decide how many company codes to be created, only then it is possible for us to understand what we are doing. Else, we will not understand what we are doing. But we keep doing it. Nothing will stop you at any stage. When I say nothing will stop you at any stage, that is where people will go wrong, right? You'll not be stopped anywhere. You'll go without any problem anywhere, everywhere, but there is a problem. And this problem comes at a stage where you will reach a dead end. When I say where you will reach a dead end, now the total journey is wasted, correct or not?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
When you reach to a dead end, you cannot come back. Though you can come back, now the, if you went at a super speed, you reached at a dead end, you have to come at a super slow rate. Because you got confused.
Yes, sir.
Now you need to find the right route. Where I need to take, whether I need to go straight, I should take left, I should take right, or I should make a U-turn, you are confused. It is exactly the same. Make sure, unless and until we are clear with the basic fundamental point, we should not move forward. What will happen if we move forward? At this moment, nothing will happen. You will not even realize that, okay, there is a problem here, because everything will work fine, but. There is a problem like a dead end. When I say like a dead end, everybody understood, right? No other option? You have to come back, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Same thing will happen here. So we need to ensure, at this level, we have the basic clarity, which is the start. Okay, we will keep getting clarity as we progress.
Sir, I have a question. So suppose, uh, uh, Buzzers has different types of business. Uh, so each business will be, uh, set up as a separate legal entity?
If they resist, you have to strictly. Ha, you'll have to look at the name, legal name.
Yes.
Then it's a separate company code. Like Bajaj Motors is there. Bajaj Finance.
Yes, Bajaj Finance is there, yes.
Right? Now, the name is different, right? Registered name is different or not? If you go take a loan. From Bajaj Finance, will it come under Bajaj Electronics or will it come under Bajaj Finance letterhead?
Bajaj Finance, Bajaj.
If you are not a registered entity, you cannot make a letterhead, understood?
Yes.
Right? You can make a letterhead only if you're registered. If you have a separate registration name, then you can create a separate legal entity, separate company code, if not, single company code. Understood? Slowly we will understand it. Now you start to get some kind of confusions, yes or no?
So one, one company code, one tax, Ajay, right?
Yeah. Now for tax, you again registered at different levels.
Yes.
Because tax in every city, tax in every state, tax at every municipality again different?
Yes.
Yes.
But wherever you put under the same name, right? That's a tax registration, it is different again.
Okay.
Okay, but the name is the same, right? You'll have to go at company name. Then you will have a.
But, but at the, but at the end, income tax, as per the income tax, one legal entity and one tax.
Right, you're right.
Yes.
Okay. Clear, right? Now slowly you will have this clarity, because we are slowly trying to understand the point. Once we get to this clarity, there's no point you will get confused. Because config and all, you can happily do it, but if this clarity is not there, config will not help us, right? Will it help us?
No, AJ, you said, um, you said right at the beginning though, company code bottom level, we can have multiple. And then we've said company code is legal entity, registered business, registered company.
Right.
And that, but that's only. Right at the start, you said company code bottom level, we can have multiple. What was we having multiple of?
As of now, you stick to company and company code, both are same. We may be. Using sometimes company, sometimes company code, but remember, these two are same, okay? When I say multiple, I mean, I mean to say, under one company, there may be different sub-companies. Like associated companies, group companies.
Oh, I see, right. Okay, I'll just rewrite it then. Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, so these points we will discuss in the coming session. I'm not taking these examples at this moment. Reason first, we wanted to get to the basic. Once we reach to the basic level, then I slowly add a different, different point. Company which is operating in multiple countries, then how we will decide the company code? There is a company, but it is called a different. Registered entities, different other legal entities. Under the same group, there are different other entities, then how you will do, deal with that? Then we will start understanding, okay, in this situation, this is how we decide. In the, this is situation, this is how we need to decide. Depending on the scenario, depending on the situation, the way we work is di- different, understood, right? In consulting, there are different ways of working. It is not a fixed. Meaning, we also should not fix something in our mind, okay, this is what I do, it is never going to happen in SAP if you go consultant. That is why we are called as consultant, right? You'll have to consider the client, according to the client consultation, decide what is to be done, understood?
Yes, sir.
Right? So when you need a specific requirement, that's where you go for a consultation, right?
Yes, yes.
Right? Simple example, you say that, okay, you're, you're not feeling well, you're finding, you know, some kind of weakness in your body and all. If you're sure, I know what it is, you don't need to consult a doctor, you directly go to a pharmacy or medical store, you get the medicine, yes, no? I know I go get this, you know, this tablet, X tablet, Y tablet, Z tablet. But if you're not sure, then that is where you need a consultation. You will go consult a doctor. Based on the doctor consultation, doctor will prescribe which medicine will suit you, right? Does it mean whatever doctor is prescribing, that is only medicine to treat it? There are so many, right? There are so many ways to treat the same problem.
Yes.
Similarly, there are so many ways to work in SAP FICO. All depends on the requirement. For this, you need consultation, you need to consult. The client, here you need to consult. Your user, get the discussion from a business, from your client, from your user, understand their business process, accordingly provide the solution. Am I clear?
Yes, sir.
Right? Slowly we have to connect. The moment you start connecting to the point, then you start getting ideas, then you start applying your mind, okay, I think because of this. You will start realizing many points are getting clarified now. Not now, as we move forward, it will be clarified. Now what will happen? You will start getting lot of doubts raised in your mind. Every doubt is a valid doubt, though it is a small, it is a silly, very basic. Every doubt, every question is a valid one, because we are all building that understanding now. Here, if you are clear, going forward, everything will be smooth. Here, if you are hiding your doubt, if you are feeling uncomfortable to ask and all, going forward, you're inviting the problems confusion. Make sure at the basic level. Right from the dot, you are clear. Understood, right?
Yes, sir.
You need to make sure we feel comfortable. That is why I am here, that is why you are here. There's no point you hide your doubt, there is no point you, you know, feel uncomfortable to ask your question, nothing to worry about it. Though it's a very small question, maybe your question will add value to others also. Right? We have to understand, we are learning here. Understood, right? Find the remaining, we will discuss in the tomorrow's session at the same time, okay, bye.